Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 12:04. Thank you so much, everybody, for joining, and thank you again for the many hours spent last night going through our interview process and preparing for that. The way that today is going to go is we're going to start with the Citizens Advisory Board representation. So Vivek is going to share kind of a consolidated summary of the CAB's feedback. Then I'm going to just ask if we have any input from the community, anybody who might have emailed in, just to get any feedback there. Then we will go around to each of the board members for them to kind of share some very short thoughts and their score for each of the candidates. And then we will do a, depending on how that discussion goes, we will do an initial vote for a primary candidate from each of the board members and then go from there. We can talk after that point if we believe we will need to go into executive to continue any contract discussions. I don't believe we have anything significant, but Rich, I will look to you to tell us if we need to have any further discussion there.
Okay, are you asking me now or?
Uh, well, if you have an answer now, sure, but I'll probably check again just in case anything comes up with the discussion that might lend itself to having an executive session.
Okay, yeah, we can touch base at the end, I guess, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so first, Vivek, can you share your? Oh, yeah.
I thought we talked last night, I thought we were, that's a little bit different, so you would like us to share the score or not? We said last night was just more of a.
So, okay, so if it's, if you'd really prefer to just, you know, share your, your feedback and your selected primary candidate, that, that is fine. The scores were just intended for each of us to kind of help ourselves with, you know, thinking through the feedback. So we certainly don't need to share it if, if you'd prefer not to.
Yeah, I'm not sure my score being like with a point apart from each other really is the.
Okay, that's fine, let, so just we'll do feedback first, CAB feedback in general, and then we'll do a short verbal summary of feedback and preferred candidate from each of the board members.
Okay, so should I start with CAB feedback?
Yes, please.
Okay, so thanks for including us in the interview process. All the CAB members scored Jason higher than Mary, so I looked at the cumulative scores. And so just want at least to mention that. Mary is an excellent communicator and would be very good in dealing with customers. And a lot of her prior experience has been in marketing and communications roles in some of her, you know. I mean, the last job was obviously as the general manager, but a lot of her work was in marketing and communications. Jason's domain knowledge and experience in power operations and distribution was a clear difference for our members. We also felt that dealing with and managing a tiny MLP is very different from RMLD. We can see Jason being in such a role for many years. He seems committed to the power sector and has training, both his MS in electrical and computer engineering and the experience in the sector. He's familiar with RMLD from a CAB perspective and is likely to make more informed decisions than Mary on how RMLD should operate based on his work experience and knowledge of the power sector and the CAB experience. So that's, so I'm not sharing any of the numbers, but that's just our, I think that that's what it boils down to. And in my personal scores, I clearly scored her at a higher, higher than Jason for stakeholder engagement because she's a very good communicator. She's very good at that.
Okay, thank you, Vivek, and to the CAB for your input, appreciate that. Any questions from anybody for Vivek on any of that feedback?
I guess, did, did you guys? And I struggle with, with, of course, the competing things of experience operationally and then communication, but stakeholder engagement and being able to do demand man, man-side management. You see any difference in the two candidates on how they might affect that, or do you, do you see their? Them both effective in that area?
Sorry, I think there's like two, I think there's two parts to your question as I read it. There's the customer engagement part of it and from a communication point, and then there's the technical side of how to do it. And I think when it comes to the communication, I think all of us can learn from Mary on how well she communicates. And maybe how we use our web system, that that's clearly a way to do things differently. But when it comes to the technical aspects, I think, you know, she would need to lean on others for guidance there.
Any other questions? For Vivek? Okay, thank you, Vivek, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So just checking, Erica, any input come through via email? I, I did not see any come direct to the board email, but anything that you've seen?
Nothing that I've seen.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we're gonna go kind of in order of seniority, although I am going to go last. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the least senior up to the most senior, and then I will go last. So I'm gonna start with Rich, if you can just share a summary and then share your, if you feel ready, please share your preferred candidate.
Yeah, great, thank you, Pam. So I appreciated Mary a lot. I agree with Vivek, her communication skills were excellent. I thought that she would do a great job of maintaining a solid relationship with the board and generating a degree of transparency. I also liked her stories about cost savings and, and other creative solutions. She seemed to have a mind for kind of making some of these deals that, that would, you know, perhaps help mitigate cost escalations. That being said, I felt like Jason's overall body of work, his passion for the job, his knowledge of the way a power system works, you know, sort of edged out those other skills for the other candidate. I sensed in Jason, you know, a, a, a good degree, a healthy degree of teachability and eagerness to learn. I felt like he would be a great candidate to grow along with RMLD for a long time, I hope. And so though it was close in my scoring, I put Jason ahead of Mary.
Thanks, Rich. Any questions for Rich on his feedback? Ray?
Yeah, I think we're all sharing the same story, two really good candidates with very different skill sets. And I come to solid conclusions about which one I pick, but depending on the moment, I come up with a different answer each time. The, some of Jason's experiences is exactly what, you know, we are going through at, at RMLD. The, the whole IT infrastructure he's going through or has been through at Danvers, and we need to go through that. I think the comment about, yes, there's his demand-side management, and then there's how do you do Dan's demand-side management? And, and I think the comment that he would be able to implement that is as opposed to, as, as, as a knowledgeable person as opposed to relying on, on others. But, but damn, Mary's good. And, and being able to communicate the future and, and, and stakeholder management is, is very powerful. And, and where she lacks, I think, in her her operational experience, she'll just lean on the, the team. I spoke with a lineman this morning, he were out on my street doing wires at poles. And I said, you know, do you guys, do anyone tell you what to do? He says, no, we, we've got that down. I mean, we, we, we can handle that, we just need someone to communicate. So, so damn, so I'm gonna flip the coin three times and see what happens, but boy, I, it's tough. If I were to make a choice in this round, I'll go, I'll go Mary, but it wouldn't take much to convince me to go the other way.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Any questions for Ray? I appreciate you doing field research. Excellent, Bob?
Oh, thank you, Pam. I just want to say, I wish we could take them both, right? I wish we had two openings.
I know.
Can we have both?
Let's collect DNA and grow a joint, joint jam, I mean, seriously.
We're gonna marry the two of them together, right? That's, that's what will happen, but, you know, I, I, again, excellent, can't, we, we, we can't go wrong with either candidate. But I'm gonna reiterate somewhat what, what Vivek said and what Ray said. You know, we're transitioning through some very large-scale projects. Jason has experience with those large-scale projects ongoing. We're gonna be, we're doing the substation, we're doing, and, and Mary was doing AMI as well. We're doing, do AMI here. We're gonna transition systems, Jason's going through the systems stuff. The feedback from the employees about understanding the business and, and having that technical background. I, I think that was a point that resonated with myself. And so when it comes down to making a choice, well, we can't go wrong with either candidate. I am going to put my vote by Jason, and it would be, if we're doing a point scale, it is point oh oh one between the two. But I'm gonna put my name to Jason.
Right, thanks, Bob. Any questions for Bob? All right, Dave, you're up.
Thanks all. Yeah, so with respect to Jason, you know, echoing Vivek and Bob, you know, deep, relevant utility experience, demonstrated leadership, demonstrated knowledge, understanding of the big strategic moves, understanding of the utility, all solid. I also actually feel that Jason is a very good communicator. I think his stakeholder engagement in Danvers, his staff engagement speaks to that. And frankly, so do his, his excellent communications in the various meetings that I've, I've seen him be in. When, when Jason, you know, he thinks before he speaks, which is a good thing to do. And when he, when he pipes in, he's, he's always making sense. And I respect what he's saying, and it makes sense, and, and he's a good leader. And he is very much my choice for the next general manager of RMLD. And this is nothing on Mary, we do have two great candidates, but Jason Small is, is my, is my choice.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, um, so echo everything that everyone said, obviously, two very different but excellent candidates. I'll just maybe, since I know everybody kind of focused on strengths, I'll just think about and share my thoughts on kind of areas that we would have to watch out for as the board, if we chose one or the other, just to, to think about it kind of from the, from the flip side. I think, you know, as we, as we look at Mary's experience, you know, certainly strong in the, the leadership and kind of strategic direction. The, the kind of crisis management, the operational management, the, the technical expertise. Obviously, that would be something the organization would, would need to support her with, as she clearly recognizes. And so that's an area where, you know, I think, you know, combination of the organization as well as members of the board and, and CAB who have that expertise would need to lean in there if we were to go with Mary. I think from Jason's perspective, obviously, some very strong operational experience. I think he had great examples of managing a variety of different challenges from a leadership perspective. You know, both kind of the customer, you know, outage challenges and, you know, the unforeseeable situations, but also things like, you know, the culture and, and bringing the team together there. I think where he will, you know, where we might want to lean in is thinking about things like this long-term strategy, kind of setting the direction for the organization, really, you know, helping to define kind of what that strategic vision is and the plan to work towards that. I think, you know, there, certainly that's an area that, that we could, you know, work closely with him on if, if we proceeded with Jason. So in terms of my, my overall vote, I, again, very difficult decision. But I think the organization would be really well-suited with, with Jason at the helm. I think, you know, from his, you know, detailed, his passion for the, the industry itself, his experience there. You know, some of the, the stories he shared about just rolling up his sleeves at three in the morning and, and jumping in and, and being that, you know, really that servant leader, I think, you know, it resonated really well with me. So I share your sentiment, it would be wonderful if we had the budget to and the, and the resources to have to. But I think I would put my support behind Jason. So, um, at the moment amongst the CAB, excuse me, amongst the board of commissioners, we have four who are placing Jason as the, the front runner and one who's placing Mary. With all the discussion, any change in folks' perspective or additional questions or topics folks wanted to discuss a little bit more?
Yeah, being, being the odd person out here, I'm really not an odd person out. I mean, I agree with all your comments about Jason. And so if, if we were to do a vote, consider it five oh, I mean, it's, he's solid. No real critique against him, it was just a tough, tough call.
Yep, okay. Is there any further discussion or would be, we be ready to make a motion to nominate a candidate?
And just a point of, like, process that the actual motion is to move to enter negotiations with or pending which? I'm just wondering what the wording of that motion is, maybe it's on the agenda and I just.
It, it looks like Erica's pulling it up right now. So currently, the suggested motion is move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners appoint blank as general manager of Reading Municipal Light Department, subject to the successful completion of employment, contract negotiations, and required contingencies.
I mean, I thought we had a discussion about this before, that really we should be leading with move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners enter into employment, contract negotiations with, with the intention of then making the appointment. Because the appointment doesn't occur until we, the contract is the offer, the successful contract is the, is the hire. So I just would.
Well, but if we, if we do, do not say appoint, then do we have to come back together after negotiations to do another motion? I would think the answer would be yes.
Well, I think the motion could say, move the RMLD Board of Commissioners, enter contract negotiations with blank for general manager of Reading Municipal Light Department, the successful conclusion of which would lead to, to the appointment of this individual to that position.
I think the motion essentially says the same thing.
Okay.
It's just a different order. We're, we're saying we're moving to a point, subject to the successful.
No, I know, it just leads with, it leads with that we've done something that we can't do until we do the negotiations. And it just, it can lead to a public understanding of something is a done deal when it isn't, it isn't yet, that's all, but.
Yes, I mean, and, and just in terms of, I, I see your point on the, like, public visibility. We aren't, our, our plan is not to do any sort of formal public communication about this. I understand this is a public meeting, obviously, people watch it.
Right, it's a public meeting.
But to be clear, we're not going to be announcing that we finalized an appointment until after a negotiation was complete. So, you know, again, the, the motion is appoint subject to the successful completion. If we do not successfully complete contract negotiations, then we would need to come back and if the appointment is not valid.
Okay, would anybody object if simply rearrange the sentence, move the, or, 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 yeah, RMLD Board of Commissioners, comma, subject to the successful completion of employment, contract negotiations, and required contingencies, comma, appoint? And just move that phrase ahead. I mean, I just, we put the cart where it belongs, you know?
I, I, I understand both points of view, and I wasn't here for Greg's hiring. But we lost leverage when we said we appointed the general manager and then we were entered contract negotiations, and the leverage was, you've already appointed me, and so sign my contract.
Kind of.
Instead of.
Is that true? Is that how it went?
I mean, we, we don't want to go back and.
Yeah, I.
I'm not, I'm not trying to relive.
The phrase, and it's the exact same wording.
I don't have a problem with, with what, I'm fine with Dave, what you proposed.
Yeah, that's all, we're just changing the ordering of the same exact words, so.
Yeah.
Move, and if you're, if you're okay with it, I will make the motion as with that movement now. If you're okay with it.
Fine with me, does anybody else have a question or need to discuss on that?
We are, we are probably gonna have to meet again to accept the contract regardless. So we don't save, we don't save a meeting by, by, by saying we're simply first entering into contract negotiation. We have to come back to a point, we're gonna have to, there's gonna be negotiations, then there's a contract, and then we'll have to accept the contract. So there's, there's a contract acceptance piece regardless. So I don't see us saving a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's just trying to be a little bit, putting the ordering in the correct order of what we're going to now do.
Yeah, no, I, I'll just add my two cents for what is what, I think I agree with Dave and Ray. I think if you change the order, you're not signaling, you know, you, you're, you're going into it with a small, powerful position for the discussion.
Slightly, yeah.
Yeah, I said, I'm fine with reordering, my perspective.
Okay. Okay, then if, then if you're okay, I'm sure if I could, are you okay with me to make the motion now?
Sure.
Okay. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners, comma, subject to the successful completion of employment, contract negotiations, and required contingencies, comma, appoint Jason Small as general manager of Reading Municipal Light Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all, all those in favor, I, I think we have to do a roll call vote.
Ray Porter, I.
Dave Talbot, I.
Rich Swanson, I.
Bob Gold, I.
And Pam Daskalakis, I. Okay, motion carries five zero. Looking forward to taking the next step. Thank you again to everyone who contributed, I know it was a lot of work. Thank you especially to our two stellar candidates. We really, really thank you for your interest and your, your participation here.
Agreed.
Excellent. We don't have anything on scheduling, it looks like, were there any open scheduling questions, Erica? No?
Um, I don't believe so, I'll circle back on that, I think we just need to get a couple on the books for actual negotiations.
Okay, sounds good. Rich, do we have anything that requires us to move to executive session regarding the contract?
No, I don't think so, in my opinion, you know, there's a couple, actually only one very small line added to the contract, which I, I think we can just take care of.
Okay, and so the next step would be to communicate that contract to, to Jason.
And how does that happen? Do you do that? Do you send that contract to him?
Great question. So I am assuming that you on behalf of board, but maybe somebody who was involved in the last process can confirm. Go ahead, Bob.
I would have, I would have Susan communicate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's good form, it's good form to have Susan, HR.
Okay, perfect. So Rich, once, would you please forward the final version from the attorney over to Susan when it's ready?
Yes, I will.
Excellent.
Is, is there a need in this meeting to say that, that the contract that's being forwarded represents the formal offer of the RMLD Board of Commissioners?
No, I think the contract itself means that.
It does, okay.
My assumption also is that when Susan sends that over, that's what the communication that she sends will say.
I mean, I would say you should send it, Pam, I mean, you're the chair, we're the board, you know, we're the, we're the governing body and, you know, we're the ones making the offer. I'm just, but.
But we're not, we're not, we're not the employer, right? So that's, that's why I mentioned Susan, I believe that.
Yeah, I think Susan would probably have some of the contingency information that needs to be processed, et cetera. So I, I think she is best positioned to.
From the administrative point of view, okay.
Yes.
And I'm sure there's other testing and things that she needs to schedule, there's, there's other administrative stuff that has to happen, so she would manage that.
Yep. Okay, so we're clear on next steps? Oh, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
While you folks are all together, you want to throw some dates together for negotiations? You know, I'm thinking a couple of days ahead, it could save a lot of emails back and forth if we have, you know, a handful of dates that we could then, you know, run by.
We can still see your screen, Erica, if you want to turn that off.
So you do have a November 6 meeting that you requested last night. I don't know, I don't believe anyone can meet next week.
Well, we, well, can't we meet next week? I mean, we, we've made this vote, we should move, and just, just suggesting that we find time and not wait two weeks.
I thought we had something on the books for Monday, did we not? As a, as a, for this purpose? Is that not true?
I was not asked to schedule anything for this purpose on Monday, however, there is a workshop for Eastern Gateway on Monday, that might be what you're thinking of.
Yeah, that was what you were thinking.
But, I mean, a Zoom meeting Monday or Tuesday and, you know, because he'll get the contract today.
You cannot do Monday because it's Friday, well, actually, you could, you could do Monday.
Okay.
How about, how about Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Sorry, Tuesday, you could do.
Tuesday at five?
Tuesday's good.
Let me, I, I think that's good, let me just check, please.
What's Tuesday's date? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
The 28th.
Okay, yep.
Five o'clock on the 28th is fine.
Okay.
Okay, and the agenda for that's gonna be purpose two, negotiations.
Or negotiate, so obviously, we would have to see if Jason is also available.
Right.
Is that something you'd like me to do or someone else gonna do that?
Bob, go ahead.
Maybe even book Tuesday, Wednesday, same time.
Yeah.
You just.
Put them, yeah, good idea, put them both on the books, you know.
Need them, use them, don't, don't need them.
Exactly, and I think, you know, speed is of the essence, right? If there's any issues, then we know soon and do we do whatever we have to do, right? So.
So 10:28, 10:29, 5:00 PM, purpose number two, and then just please confirm who will be asking, Jason?
Can we, sorry.
I would say Susan, make it part of the package and communication as to what.
I agree, that's what I.
Yeah, yeah, and make it all part of that same communication.
Do you want to try one more day or keep it to two?
I can't do the 30th, so.
Yeah, I can't do the 30th either. One, one consideration is if for some reason Jason can't make it at five, we could push it back into the evening.
Yeah, I don't know what his hours are like at the Danvers, um, your meetings usually start at six, correct?
What, what, why don't we just do a wide bracket, right? Do five, five to eight, right? We can determine, we can shift the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's say preference. Yeah, let's, 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 let's say preference is five o'clock, just so we can all plan our lives. And then if, if he comes back and says, no, can't do five, needs to be six, then we'll adjust from there.
And, and Susan is gonna send him this final offer. Rich, you're gonna, you're gonna send Susan the final offer that she's gonna put out?
Correct. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that momentarily.
Okay, and Bob, I see your hand is up.
We'll need regular and executive, right? Open and go into an executive to contract negotiation.
Correct. So it will be, yeah, it will be open, enter under purpose number two, and then your executive will be negotiating. And then did we decide you want to add a third day even for the following week and I can just post for all the days now?
Probably a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Hopefully, yeah, and hopefully the communication is that we really like to have, you know, have this done next week and know if there's any reason, you know, if we can.
Okay, so
But you could, you could wait, I mean, you could wait to schedule that, that following week meeting until next week, right? I mean, to actually post it, because we won't know if we're gonna need it till we know, which won't be till Wednesday, right?
I, I, let's err in the side of caution. Let's, let's do the same thing, book the third and the fourth, right? And then that way it's out, it's there, you need them, the time slots are there, you can always cancel them.
Sure. So yeah, for our calendars, but maybe they don't need to be actually posted at this point. That's all, that's all they may. You have to post next Tuesday, Wednesday. You don't have to actually post the following ones until we know we need them. But if they're on our calendars, we know we can.
We can also post, send, just cancel and then remove. But at least if we post, we're set.
Yeah, just
I need it on my calendar.
Sure.
I, I, I need that slot there, so I know it's potentially a time.
Yeah, right. I mean, you, you could do that. You could do that no matter what, but yeah, I got you.
Okay, well, so Susan will ask for four dates, two next week, two the following week. We'll start with 5:00 PM. We'll find out if there's, needs to be flexibility with that time. Not all four of them may work for him, so we, we may end up with just two or three dates. So, but whatever he is able to confirm works, we'll post, we'll ask for an invite to come to our RMLD and RMLD email addresses and put it all on our calendars.
And then one more, in person assuming or remote?
Both.
Both, perfect.
Yeah, both options might be needed.
And then would you like me to send these dates to Susan to send to Jason or Rich, do you want to send those when you send her the contract?
Uh, why don't you send the dates, Erica, if you don't mind?
Yep.
And I, it's probably clear to everybody but me, but I heard 28 and 29. I didn't hear two more dates.
I have 28, 29, 11-3, 11-4.
Yeah.
11-4 is election day, not that that would be limiting, but it is.
So 11-5.
No, let's just keep 11-4, please. All right, it's fine. Just, just point of order, that's all.
Sure, and then reminder, you also have an 11-6 meeting. So if needed, you always could probably tack something onto that as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Or loose ends that we need to tie up here? All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Onward.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes, indeed. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Weekend.
Oh, we have to move to adjourn.
Oh, sorry.
I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Reporter, aye.
Talbot, aye.
And Daskalakis, aye.
Thanks all.
Bye-bye.